And I want to really, really thank San Diego County gun owners for hosting us here until 5 o'clock tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartz.
That's us, yeah.
Hey.
Here at the Gun Show.
Yeah, this segment is brought to you by San Diego Propane. If you're living out in East County and you're tired of dealing with the big guys and you want to try a little family-owned and operated company, San Diego Propane, Dave and his family do an awesome job. I used to be with another small family, but they flipped over to a corporate, raised my rates. It was kind of ugly. Dave will come out, take a look, and if he likes what he's got, trust me, he'll take really good care of it. S-D-Propane.com. All right. Hey, Michael, we got a couple of good guests here today. Who we got?
We do. We're down at the Gun Show, first off, here in Del Mar. So, everybody listening, it's still time to come down to the Gun Show.
Yeah.
Open until 4 o'clock. So, get, jump in the car, turn on the radio, come on down to the Gun Show. We're very, very happy. Here in Del Mar, yes, they're selling ammo. Yes, they're selling firearms. Same deal as before. So, come on down and help support us. And as we are set up here and talking to people at the Gun Show, two very, very cool guests came walking by. So, we decided to sit them down and talk to us. First is Joe Leventhal.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good afternoon. And you're running for...
San Diego City Council, District 5.
Awesome. And very special guest, Amanda Rigby.
Thank you. Very glad to be here. Vista City Council, District 3.
On Vista City Council, also a proud founding board member of San Diego County Gun Owners and a big supporter of the Second Amendment. So, how are you guys doing? How you doing, Joe?
Doing great. I feel bad. I just jumped in on Amanda's time here, but I saw her sitting here and had to say hello. And of course, Michael, you're here, and she just thought I'd come by.
What do you think of the Gun Show?
Oh, it's wonderful. You know, the Second Amendment, words, you know, words matter. But I had to come here and actually feel what the Second Amendment means. And given the effort to shut this down, really want to make sure I was here and support it. And you can just feel the Second Amendment in this room.
What did you think about that? Now, you're an attorney by trade, right?
Correct.
Went to, I'm assuming, a law school?
Correct. I did, yes. You might have heard of Georgetown?
I've heard of Georgetown, yeah. I've heard of Georgetown. They do. Relatively new law school, but they're doing okay, right?
They're doing okay.
They're relatively new. So, what did you think about all that as it was going on from a lawyer's perspective? When they were trying to shut it down and everything that was going on?
Well, from a lawyer's perspective and also maybe just common sense, you know, it was obviously an attempt to appease, you know, people that are trying to be politically correct that don't understand what the Second Amendment means. And I'm glad that, you know, judges in this country understand what the Second Amendment means and don't allow something that is, you know, trying to push a loud vocal group, allow a loud vocal group to shut down what is constitutionally protected. And frankly, you know, as you can see, if you come down here, which I encourage, like Michael said, come down here, you know, it's safe. You don't have people coming around firing guns in here. That's not what this is about.
No, no, no. Well, I gotta tell you, I'm the car guy by choice. I mean, that's what I do.
Yeah.
I'd never been here before.
Yeah.
And I gotta tell you, I walked this whole building and the scariest thing I seen was a machete. Okay? I mean, it was big, dude. I mean, and then they got Samurai swords here. I mean, so, the gun issue is so mild. I mean, it's, and what you've got is a lot of people educating.
Absolutely.
What did you think, Amanda?
I think it's a great show, and I'm glad that it's still here. And I hope that we continue to have the Gun Show here. Because I think, you know, it is a constitutionally protected right, but it's also the right of people to protect themselves. And it's the right of women. And I see this issue from a woman's perspective, that when we have people who are trying to take our gun rights away from us, what they're doing is they're putting women at more risk of harm. And I'm going to put this out there. I've never said this publicly, but I was a victim one time years ago, and I was not armed. And let me tell you, I don't ever want to go through that again. And I think that when we talk about the war on guns, we're talking about the actual war on women. So, I am really very proud to be here today, to be supporting the Gun Show. And I am, I am an adamant Second Amendment supporter. I actually like the whole Constitution. I like all of our amendments.
Funny thing, huh?
Right? And, you know, the First Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, the Fifth Amendment. I like all of them. But the Second Amendment to me is very important. And it's very disturbing to me that we live in a society in a time where we have legislators who are really very ignorant as to what the Second Amendment and what self-defense was built on and what it means for us today. And I think it's incumbent upon all of us to stand strong and not just fight it, but to educate our fellow Americans on what being a defended American actually means for us. So, I'm very happy to be here today.
Well, if you didn't know any better, this could be a fishing show.
Yeah.
When you stop and think about it, it could be poles and bags and gear for fishing.
Let's tell you what it is. And, you know, I've been going to, I've been at every Gun Show for the past, I think, 11 or 12 years now. They usually have five. They haven't had one in nine months. And I can't tell you, I mean, it's, there are people that I only know from going to the Gun Show. And they come up, well, hey, how you been? How's your family? How's this? You know, it's a really fantastic event, you know, and for them to vote again. You know, the city of Del Mar, being a Vista City Council member, these fairgrounds do not belong to the city of Del Mar.
They belong to the state of California. They belong to the people of California.
Right. And this is a regional asset. So, when Del Mar and with the 22nd Agricultural Board voted to get rid of this Gun Show, I mean, they were voting against your constituents. They were voting against your city and, you know, your ability to
Right.
use this asset as well. And I know you and I had a conversation about that as well. It's just, it's not right. It's not right.
And as a councilperson, I don't, I don't really make a habit of contradicting other councils. That's, that's not what I do. They have to do what they think is right for their community that affects their community. But when you have a regional asset in your neighborhood or in your city that affects everybody and what you, what you do there affects everybody, then you kind of have to think a little bit farther than just what's happening inside your gallery. Because I know a lot of city council members, they really pay attention to the 20 or 50 people sitting in the room. And like in my city, you know, we'll get 50 people in the room, and you don't think about the other 100,000 outside the room who couldn't make it to the council meeting that day. But you really do have to think about it. This is a regional asset. And as you know, the board members for the Agriculture District, I think they come from all over the state to serve on this board. So, it really is a regional thing, and it really does impact people.
Have you seen any of them here today?
I have not seen any of them here today.
Well, I'll tell you, with the board, you know what amendment they do really like is the 21st. Because it seems like every other event here is just a big drinking fest.
Yeah, you think?
Which I'm fine with, you know, but, so. So, Joe, what were your thoughts when, on, as it's going into the city council, something like this comes up, how are you going to look at it? How are you going to evaluate a situation like this?
Consistent with my principles, consistent with my values, consistent with the Constitution. I mean, again, to me, it's a no-brainer. You know, people that are outlawing things like this, a lot of the efforts at, you know, quote-unquote, gun control, it's reacting out of fear. And I understand that fear. People see, unfortunately, you know, the media really likes to play up all of these incidents that we're seeing across the country. And I understand that fear. People want to do something. They want their elected officials to do something. The target is just the wrong...
Well, just think, just think if we put all our effort, all our money into taking guns away from criminals.
Right.
What a concept.
Right.
I mean, because they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to take guns away from private citizens
Right.
that have not gotten in any trouble at all. I did talk to one politician at KUSI, and he told me I couldn't use his name, but he agreed with me 100%. And he said it's too difficult. We can't go after the criminals. You know how hard that would be?
Right.
I go, oh, I get it. Now, it makes perfectly good sense. Come beat up on me, because I'm going to lay down for you.
It doesn't make sense, because what they do is they want to keep us defenseless against the criminals that they don't go after.
Exactly.
That doesn't make sense.
So, you're both running for office. You're both up for election next year. Amanda, do you have a website set up?
How can I help you?
Yes, amandarigby.com. And I could use all the help that anybody wants to provide for me. So, go there, and we can sign up volunteers and make donations.
Perfect. Joe?
JoeforSanDiego.com.
Joe, what, F-O-R?
F-O-R.
Joe for San Die- I like that.
I do, too.
I hate it when people use like the number, and you're sitting there typing like F-O-U-R.
I've got them all. They'll all redirect.
Oh, really? Is that smart?
Ah, see, he knows how to work that cornfield.
Smart man. That's why, that's why you should vote for him right there, just because he figured that part out. Well, thank you guys so much for coming.
We sure appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming down and supporting the Gun Show and
Absolutely.
and having fun with it.
And Gun Sports Radio.
And Gun Sports Radio.
All right. Well, hey, we're going to take a quick break. When we come back, there's a whole lot more down here at the Gun Show at Del Mar. It's going to be here till 4 o'clock. There's still plenty of time. I'm telling you, folks, it'll be an eye-opener. All right, this is FM 96, AM 1170.
The Answer.
Hey, welcome to Gun Sports Radio. We're down here at the Del Mar Gun Show. Thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners. I'll tell you what, folks, you really need to give these guys a call. Go to www.sdcg0.com or O, s-d-c-g-o.com. That's San Diego County Gun Owners.
Dot org. S-d-c-g-o dot org.
It says com.
Well, I'm gonna...
I'll smack that guy.
There you go. Lance is going to get his ears boxed.
So, San Diego County Gun Owners.
Dot com.
How old is that sheet of paper? I mean, it looks like that's used, you know...
Dude, there's 18 pages for a three-hour show.
It's parchment.
Yeah. And we want to thank Bumper Doc Santee, Scratches Dings and Dents, 8711 Magnolia Street. Go to santeepumperdoc.com. All right, we got a special guest. Who is this guy?
Another special guest. Well, again, we're down here at the Gun Show in Del Mar. First time in nine months. They're back. They're going to be back in December. San Diego County Gun Owners is down here signing up members and having fun. And we're grabbing people as they walk by. And one of my very, very favorite, probably my favorite politicians...
I don't know if that's saying much. I don't know what...
Favorite politician?
I don't know what kind of standard that is.
I was thinking twice on that one myself.
I thought I was going to say good friend.
One of my...
Neighbor.
Honestly, the reason I moved to Santee, Senator Brian Jones.
Thank you, sir. How are you?
Thank you.
Do you live next door to him?
Not next door, but pretty close.
We're literally a 10-minute walk away from each other.
Well, if I'm, it's a 20-minute walk for me. It's 10 for him.
And a 15-minute, a 10-minute walk or a 15-minute drive, however you want to do.
So, who's this? Is this your driver?
This is my driver. This is my buddy Scott. Yeah. He works, he's a general manager for Mossy Nissan.
Oh, nice.
Ah, I thought you looked familiar. No, we're not talking cars. We'll talk at another time.
They did have the 370Z Club on KUSI the other day.
Is it only going to build 500 of them or 50? I can't remember.
Oh, the new, yeah, it'll be a limited production. Actually, I saw the 2021.
Yeah, well, I've got the, I've got the red and white one out back.
We're at a Gun Show, guys.
See? Well, you brought him. I didn't have nothing to do with it.
Everybody loves Nissan Zs, too.
That's right. And guns and cars. How bad could it be?
Yeah.
So, what do you think, Brian? What do you think of the Gun Show? I know you've been many times before, but this is the first time?
You know, it's been, I'm really glad you guys invited me out today to get me out here. It's been a couple of years since I've been here. And, you know, this is great. You show up, and you've got real Americans.
Oh, boy.
You've got a diverse-looking crowd, a lot of women out here, a lot of, you know, different folks. And enjoying the, enjoying the Second Amendment, getting their supplies, showing off their...
Buying ammo?
You know, and enjoying their hobby.
Yeah.
Which is really, you know, what this, what this is, this is all about.
Exactly.
The Second Amendment, obviously, is bigger than a hobby. And I think we're becoming more and more clear in America why the Second Amendment was envisioned by our founding fathers. And I think, you know, if they could speak to us today, they're thankful that they, that they put it in the Constitution the way they did.
Can you believe how intelligent they were back in those days?
Unreal.
I mean, it's really unreal.
It's like they read books or something.
Like, or they have a Ouija board or a crystal ball to know the insanity we're dealing with now.
Well, it wasn't difficult. All they did is they studied human nature, you know, over the course of history. You watch what humans do when they get power.
Yeah.
And when they hang on to power.
Yeah.
They don't want to let go of power.
Oh, no.
And, you know, if I can segue into politics a little bit, it's kind of what President Trump's dealing with right now. President Trump went to Washington DC to drain the swamp.
Right.
He gets there and finds out, hey, this is a good idea, but guess what? The swamp don't want to be drained.
Uh-uh.
You know what I mean?
And you as a politician, could you take as much abuse as that man's taking?
I'll tell you what, it's tough. I mean, it is...
I mean, you know, you're in politics.
I'm in politics, and, you know, I take quite a bit of abuse up in Sacramento. Fortunately, I've got thick skin, and I can expect it. But he's getting abused from places that no president has ever, has ever been.
And for those who don't know, we're talking to Senator Brian Jones out in East County.
Right. North County, too.
North and East County.
North and East County.
You started out, you ran against an incumbent in Santee for city council, right?
Two incumbents.
Two incumbents.
Yeah.
One...
Beat them both.
Beat them both.
There you go.
Came in first in a three-way race.
Nice.
Yeah.
And then from city council, you went to the Assembly.
To the Assembly, correct.
Served honorably.
Had a tough race there in the, in the primary. That was when we had a real primary. So, it was, you know, myself and two other strong Republicans. And I came in first in that one and smoked them pretty good, so...
Yes, you did. And so, now you're the state senator.
And I had a beginning of a tough race there.
Yeah.
And just outraised my opponent and got to the filing deadline. And he decided that maybe he didn't want to be abused by running against me. So, he didn't even file.
So, what is, what would you say your success is?
Consistency. Consistency and being out with the public.
And honesty.
Yeah, of course, honesty, yeah.
Well, you got to throw that out there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Come on. Because I think that's one of the key reasons. The other thing you don't do is, because I'm on your emailer, you don't inundate me every two days for money.
Right.
You and I had this conversation the other day.
Yeah.
And I think you're more or less, let me show you what I can do.
Right.
And then if you like what I can do, if you decide to help out, I'm here for you.
You know what? That's, that's really kind of my philosophy. I'm going to, I'm going to show you what I do. I don't pull any punches. And if you don't like what I'm doing, tell me. And, you know, well, I'll either tell you why I'm doing it, and you'll agree with me.
Or you won't.
Or you won't, and we'll go away friends.
And that's okay, too.
And that's way okay.
Yeah, I know.
But the reason I go through your timeline is, what's, what's next, as if I didn't know?
Well, next is, we've got a little bit of a kerfuffle out in the 50th Congressional District.
It is a little bit of a kerfuffle, is it?
Yeah, thank...
And we've got two guys that don't live in the district that are, you know, well-known and, and good guys. But they don't, you know, in my opinion, they don't represent that district. And so, if we're going to have intruders come into our, I'm going to stand firm and protect my district and make sure I'm there for the citizens and the voters that I've been serving for the last 20 years.
And that's a strong platform. From the little guy back in the, out in the hills of Alpine.
Right.
That is a really, really strong.
Yeah.
And people talk about it.
This is my homeland. This, I'm going to protect my homeland.
Yeah.
And so, so last week, you announced...
That I'm running for Congress in the 50th Congressional District, which runs from Temecula and Riverside, south down to El Cajon, basically, Highway 8, and mostly east of the 15. But it does pick up Fallbrook and San Marcos, which are on the east, west side of the 15.
Well, congratulations on your announcement.
Thank you, thank you.
And congratulations to Heather.
We've got strong support.
Happy birthday to Heather. Hope you're listening. Happy birthday, Heather.
Yesterday was her birthday. We've got the endorsement from the mayor of La Mesa, mayor of San Marcos, several council members. Lots of donors are coming to the table. We'll start our donor operation on Tuesday. We wanted to start on the first day of the new quarter. So, we'll have that ready to go on the website and put that announcement out on Tuesday.
So, what's your message, other than the fact that you live in your district and you're here for the people? Or is that it?
No, no, that, well, and my track record. Look at my track record of even as a minority in Sacramento, and now this year even in the super minority, I was able to get 19 bills signed by Governor Brown when he, when he was governor. And already this year, I've gotten five bills signed by Governor Newsom. But that, and people say, well, you know, are they all leftist bills? No, they're not leftist bills.
They can't be leftist.
They're constituent bills, right? They're, it's important to my constituents. So, I've shown that I can go even and operate from the minority and get stuff done. So, now think about going to Washington DC and being in the majority, which we have an opportunity of in 2020, if not 2020, I think 2022 for sure, we'll get the majority back. You know, what can I accomplish there? I'm the number two Republican in Sacramento coming out, you know, I got elected.
Number two, who's number one?
The minority leader, Shannon Grove, is number one. I'm the caucus chair, so I'm number two. But we, we got elected to office, and then we both got elected to our leadership positions. So, I have, have shown that even as the new guy in the Senate, I can come in and immediately, my colleagues know my background, my reputation, and elevated me to the position to be the number two guy in the, in the state senate.
And so, in part of that, do you have any opinion at all on the Second Amendment?
You know, I think the Second Amendment was very rightly written and properly researched at the time. And I think the language is exactly what it needs to be even for today. And what I'm even most excited about is, you know, a lot of your listeners, a lot of people don't know this. President Trump has almost flipped the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals.
Yeah.
He's, get this. President Trump has appointed seven new judges to the Ninth Circuit. There was already two or three conservative judges there before. Two more appointments by Trump, and the thing flips conservative.
Wow. And you know, and the media...
And pro 2A.
And the media's not talking about it.
No, they're not talking, because it's a victory.
But that's okay. That's okay.
You know what, actually?
Keep it nice and quiet.
It is okay, because if they start, he's having this, here, here's what Donald Trump is fabulous about, I think. He tweets out something that creates a shiny thing, you know, over here on the, you know, out in the stratosphere, that all the media and the leftists and everybody else goes and jumps on whatever that thing is. And then over here, he's just being, 150 judges he's appointed.
Do you have a dog or a cat? Do you have cats or dogs?
I have two dogs.
Okay.
That eat cats.
Take a ball with a bell in it, shake it.
Yeah.
Throw it over on the corner of the room, and every one of your dogs will go over there, too.
That's exactly right.
And that's the media.
Yeah. That's exactly...
And he works...
And he's playing them as like...
Oh, like a fiddle.
I really get frustrated with Republicans that are criticizing him. It's like...
They don't get it.
His game plan is as clear as day. He's been doing the same thing since he announced his...
Read his book.
Right.
Read his book.
And he's winning. And he's winning, he's, he's winning for us.
I can't even imagine a pro Second Amendment Ninth Circuit Court, Dave. Like, every time John Dillon comes on, it'll be good news. I mean, that doesn't even make sense.
Well, let's talk, hey, let's talk about that lawsuit that I have somebody that I, very close to me.
Yeah.
What's the status on that lawsuit?
Well, it's, it's, do you want, it's, it's coming up. It's basically, the state of California made it illegal for adults under the age of 21 to purchase a firearm.
Right.
So, we started, we, you know, we're looking to file a lawsuit and a...
Well, my son wanted to sue the state, so here we go.
There we go.
Yeah. Well, tell him to come over and see us, because...
Your son is, he's a competitive shooter, right?
Yes.
With competitive shooter, and he's, he's not even, he's 20?
He's 20 right now. He'll be 21 in April.
21 in April. So, competitive shooter, guy went through high school, right?
Yeah.
Uh, doing what, trap and...
Trap. He's a competitive trap shooter.
True.
Went to the state finals.
Wow.
You know, which there's, a lot of people know this, there's hundreds of schools in California that have trap teams.
Sure.
Half a dozen in San Diego County.
Yeah.
And then Riverside, add Riverside County to it, and there's a couple more. So, look, these guys, they graduate from high school, they want to buy their own shotgun. So, between 18 and 21, they can't buy a shotgun. Are you kidding me? So...
Are you kidding me? I like your are-you-kidding-me segment. Have you ever seen Brian's are-you-kidding-me segments? They're awesome.
No, I haven't either. I gotta look at that.
Where he brings up some, something ridiculous going on in Sacramento and says, are you kidding me?
If your folks go to my website, electbrianjones.com, I think some of the videos are there. They can go to my Senate website, too.
Super.
Just look, Google Senator Brian Jones, and my website will come up.
But your son's the plaintiff, Matt, right?
Right.
Matt's the plaintiff in that case, and John's the attorney?
Yeah.
And hopefully, we're going to flip that around and make sure that adults have their Second Amendment rights.
So, it's at the Ninth Circuit right now?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. I guess I should know that, too.
That's okay. John Dillon, he's rocking and rolling, boy, I tell you.
You know what? Once John's on the scene, I don't need to worry about it anymore, right?
Nope. Well, I'll tell you what, you're more than welcome to come back on. I know Michael will be dragging you on on a regular basis.
Appreciate that.
We want to stay on top of your, your campaign, and I'm sure I'll see you at KUSI at least three or four times a week.
You guys are doing a great job. Thanks for being out here. I know it's a lot of work being out here all weekend.
Not a problem, buddy.
Thanks for all you do, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Truly, I'm thankful that you're in office.
All right. Hey, folks, we're going to take a quick break. This is FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
All right, folks. Hey, welcome back, folks. We're down here at Del Mar. This is Gun Sports Radio. Normally, it's the Green Machine Radio Show, but thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners, they had us come down here. And we're going to be here till 5 o'clock, if you can believe that. And we're talking everything about the Gun, the Gun Show. I've not been to the Gun Show before, and I'm going to tell you straight out, folks, this is not anything like what you hear in the media. This is like a bunch of friendly, family, this could be a fishing show, and you wouldn't know it. I mean, it is as cool as you can get. And it's here, it's going to be open until 4 o'clock. There is still plenty of time, so come on down. And I also want to thank 3D Products for all their support. If you're trying to keep your vehicle clean and spiffy, 3D Products is in two locations, one in Escudito, one in Chula Vista. Go to smartcarcareproducts.com for all your detail needs. And they've got detailed classes as well. All right, Mr. Schwartz, how you doing today?
Well, we got all kinds of cool people going through here. Joe Darmisi?
I'm here.
How's it going?
It's going great.
Yeah? What do you think of the show?
Show is nice. I'm glad to hear Dave fess up that he's never been to a Gun Show before, because...
I'm a little disappointed in that, too.
Well, no, it's not, it's not that. It's just that I had to come. You know, you can't do a Gun Show and not be involved. I'm not as involved as you are.
Right.
Did you tell your wife you bought two more shotguns?
No, did not.
Oh, you didn't tell her that yet? Oh, okay, I'm just checking.
Well, I'm glad we're all, since we're all testifying here anyway, because, uh, I hadn't been the one before either for a couple of years and, uh, you know, I thought, well, if I'm gonna be involved with the gun owners and stuff, I should know what one of these is like. And I had, I had exactly the same reaction that you had. Uh, I came, it was nothing like.
You were expecting all of this?
I was expecting to see a lot of people that looked like, like a cross between Duck Dynasty and Rambo. And that's not what you see here at all.
How many kids have you seen here?
Um, I see a lot of families and kids and, you know, and there's not as many guns, I mean, there's guns here, there's a lot of guns.
There's more vintage.
Yeah, there's a lot of other stuff here that's cool. So yeah, I was really surprised.
Like I said, that machete scared the you-know-what out of me, I mean.
The Samurai sword.
Yeah, I know, I watched Kill Bill two, or one last night, that's why it's got me all fired up.
Well, we have a guy here who's actually been to a gun show before, guys.
Yeah, he's got my man on his shirt.
And that's, uh, Jim Miller.
Oh, yeah.
How you guys, how you doing?
Doing well.
From Cajon Valley School Board. I see you at just about every gun show.
Well, I love the gun show. I grew, I pretty much grew up at the gun show. My dad walked me around as I was a kid, looking at Samurai swords and muskets to, to Henry rifles and, and go away from there.
Is Henry here?
I don't, uh, there are probably some people selling Henrys, but I don't think the actual name.
I'd love to get a Henry, I think that, now that's a cool rifle.
Absolutely.
I like to know where Jim gets his pink ammo cans.
I noticed that too.
Daughter's ammo.
Keep, keep in mind that my 11-year-old can outshoot most grown men, so I figured that the, the pink ammo can would be appropriate for today.
Oh, is that you, you bought her for?
Yeah, it's her birthday on, on Wednesday and that's not her only gift, but, uh, now that I have the pink ammo can, I can put some other things in it, like a, like a new Sig Red Dot I got for her and a couple other things.
Talk about, look, he's having more fun for his daughter's birthday.
I know, right?
Well, this is the place. I mean, everything is here, everything from diecast, collectibles, vintage rifles, and there's so much knowledge in this building. Oh my gosh, if you stop at a booth, you're gonna get an education.
Well, there's a lot of accessories that you can't, you know, you can buy stuff on the internet, but then you get it at home and it's not quite like what you thought it was gonna be. You can try stuff out here, which is something I really like.
Right, well, the educational component that he just talked about, if you remember, so the Cajon Valley School Board, as a school board authorized me to present in front of the 22nd Agricultural District.
Yeah.
When we were trying to keep the, uh, the gun show here because of the educational component. You know, it makes no sense for these, for the people who are protesting our gun shows, right? To say gun shows are bad when in fact, this is a one-stop shop for all the education, safety and training you can possibly want. You would think that of any of the gun-related issues that they would have a problem with, the gun show should be the last one because that's where you can come and get training and safety.
Right.
So as a, as a district, we supported it.
Did you see any protesters on your way in?
No.
No, I didn't either. You know, once the cameras get turned off, they just.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, they're only here to be on. So being with the school district, what, what were you guys at as far as seeing if a teacher would like to carry? And if he's trained and, you know, the whole nine yards.
Well, here's the problem, we're in California, right?
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
So we, we can't have, we can't have anything, anybody other than law enforcement carry on campus. AB 424 put together by Todd Gloria, that guy's running for, for mayor, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so he put that together. SB 707 took the CCW aspect out of school districts, but allowed for the school district superintendent or designated to give an authorization letter. So as with me, my CCW was valid at that point.
Ah, gotcha.
Now with AB 424, it closed that option, so it took away the local control, which was really the biggest issue. I tried to work with Todd's office on that, of course, he wasn't gonna listen to us. But, um, there's districts that certainly make sense, whether you like it or not, Sacramento, that you should have concealed carry on campus. But our district specifically, we're well ahead of the curve on, on the school safety issues. Every one of our middle schools, we now have, have, uh, an SRO on there. We put together a director of security and safety for our entire district, Ryan Love, former law enforcement, Ryan's fantastic. He and I just actually lectured on this topic with Morgan Ballas as our, as our consultant. We just lectured on the National School Safety Security Council in Las Vegas in July.
And how much training do you do a year with these SROs?
Well, we, they, they just came online.
But they're gonna get a lot of training throughout the year.
Absolutely, because their interaction with the students and how we run our drills and what we've done to change by bringing in, uh, Morgan Ballas's group as an example to consult, to teach us as a school district, really what we're looking for, what are we trying to do?
Right.
And the biggest component as a school district that we're doing that others are not, training the kids. You can train your teacher and your staff all day long, but if the kids, when, when the training comes, if they just think it's just, oh, it's another fire drill and there's no fire.
Right.
What happens?
Right. So. Yeah, you gotta make it, you have to get them included.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, no, as old as I am, I, it still boggles the mind that I'm supposed to go underneath a wooden desk in the event of a nuclear attack.
Well, you know.
But that's what they trained us and that's what we remember, even at my age. I still, it was, you know, pounded into our heads, that's how you're gonna get safe.
I remember, I remember, yeah.
Yeah.
Wooden desk, fire passer.
Which is about as, which was probably as effective as what they're, they were training kids to do with a shooter today.
Well, yeah. Exactly.
Because, you know, the run, hide, fight thing, I mean, it's good in certain areas, but like my wife is a, is a elementary school principal. And, you know, running, if you've got a group of first graders or kindergarten, is not really an option anymore.
No.
And, um, you know, there's other things that they need to be thinking about there, so.
Sure, yeah.
It's good that they are.
And a lot of the staff or a lot of the, the old protocols was to collect everybody in an open field.
Oh, wow.
Really, that's, that's a brilliant idea if there's an active shooter, right?
It's like Pearl Harbor putting all the airplanes together so they'll be safe.
Yeah, so that's being dramatically changed from our district and, and we're presenting to other districts to say, hey, this is what you need to start doing, guys.
Well, you would think with all the terrible, terrible shootings that we've had within schools, people would say, okay, well, let's look at each one of these, you know, situations. What can we do to correct it? But it doesn't seem like your guys are, but the, but the lawmakers just, they don't even want to hear about it.
Well, because their instant default is, well, to take guns. Well, last time I checked, schools are already a gun-free zone, I'm using my little air quotes here on the radio.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But all that does is create more problems than you, than you initially had. Because now you have no ability to respond to the threat.
Right, well, yeah, now I say, okay, your school, oh, it's gun-free, cool, I can go there.
Right.
But if they said, oh, you're heavily armed.
Maybe I don't want to joke this episode.
Maybe I'll go down to this school.
Right.
I know, it's, I just see, that's where the logic doesn't come into my little brain. It just doesn't make sense that people can't see the errors of their ways by opening up soft targets.
Well, you know, Utah, teachers are allowed to carry.
Right.
Texas, teachers are allowed to carry.
Right.
You don't hear a lot of media reports of school shootings out of Utah or Texas.
Nope.
All right, so.
Not that, not that it couldn't happen.
No, not that it couldn't happen.
Anything could happen, but the less, it's a less chance of it happening in a, in a school that's protecting the children versus a school that's not.
Precisely.
A school shooting is, you know, not a gun issue, it is a mental health issue.
Exactly.
The severity of the school shooting, uh, you know, it could possibly be a gun issue and your inability to protect yourself is, is what would, would, uh, you know, turn a bad situation into an extremely severe one. Just saw, you guys saw the same study, like 89% of mass shootings in the last like 30 years happened in a gun-free zone.
Yeah, I think it was actually like 92%, but either way, you're right there in that ballpark.
Sure.
And it, and it makes, it makes a lot of sense as to why that happens that way.
Right, so is, is someone carrying in a school going to stop a mass shooting? Well, there's, someone's still going to make the decision, they're still going to have the mental health problem, they're still going to make the decision to try to cause harm to somebody, but somebody being able to defend against that would certainly stop the severity of, of, uh, of that situation.
Yeah, and that's what happens because most of the, the deaths and the injuries and everything happen in the first few minutes. And you have to believe that like with my wife's school, for instance, there's a share of substation like within a half a mile of it. I mean, if something happened there, everybody and his uncle would be there in minutes. But even with that.
What can you do in a minute?
Well, and you have to think that they don't hear about it until somebody shoots. That's when the first phone call gets made. And in that three or four minutes, however long it takes for somebody to get there, there's all sorts of bad things happen. If you had somebody armed there, you know, like Michael was saying, on scene when it happens, you should be able to severely cut down, um, you know.
If you don't mind me, guys, if, if I don't want to jump in because I know our time's getting short.
No, you're good.
Keep in mind one thing, school shootings are down compared to the 1990s per capita. The difference is they're reported because of our reporting, our media system, much more. So the perception is that shooters are out there, but the reality is as down. But that doesn't help the kids because the kids' reality is their perception. So we're trying to get the, the reality and perception in line that will help the kids stay calm in school, parents be happy with the kids in school, and that will help those kids get educated.
Right.
Because they'll be happier where they're at and safe and they'll feel safe.
Yeah, so you know, in your, in your wife's situation, I mean, it's gotta be a constant fear, you know, every day when she goes to work.
Well, it is, it's a little bit frustrating because, you know, again, when you're, you're married to people that are in that field.
Yeah.
You, you hear about all the stuff that goes on all the time and the stuff that could potentially, you could see just turning into something. And, you know, those people are defenseless and it's like that in all the, or most of the schools.
And why is it that I think your wife would run to the problem, not run away?
Yeah, unfortunately, I think she would.
Am I right?
Yes, I think you are.
I don't think I've seen anybody more passionate about her job and her protection of kids.
Exactly. Unfortunately, the dry eraser is not the best, uh, best defensive weapon at the time.
No, no, well, and you're so right. And like, you, you keep thinking, well, how many more situations do we have to go through before we decide to protect our children? You know, that's the way I see it. All right, we're gonna go ahead and take a break.
All right, awesome.
Nice to have you on.
Thank you, Jim.
Oh, no, no.
Appreciate it, man.
More than happy to have you on.
Go buy some ammo now.
Yeah, it's in the boxes.
Oh, okay, good.
It's in that pink, it's in that pink gun bag.
Of course.
All right, folks, hey, you're all listening to the Gun Sports Radio Show down here at the Delmar Gun Show. And I want to thank San Diego County Gun Owners for paying for the big dollars to get us down here because they just did a phenomenal job. And for $10 a month, you can join and if you really want to be treated like VIP, go with the 10 ring. It's really a good deal. All right, we're gonna take a quick break. We come back a whole lot more, FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The answer.
All right, folks, hey, welcome back. You're listening to the Gun Sports Radio right down here at Delmar Fairgrounds. Thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners for $10 a month. You can get on board with us and help us keep your second amendment, along with all your other rights, free and clear. Also, this segment is brought to you by John's Automotive Import Repair, 7447 University Avenue in La Mesa. NAP Auto Care, AAA, ASC certified, master tech. Go to johnsandiegautorepair.com, tell them you heard it right here on KCBC. All right, who you got lined up this time, sir?
We have engineer extraordinaire, founder of Crossarmory, Wes Cross.
I was totally impressed, I go, look at that. Crossarmory, it's really his name.
I know, right?
Yeah.
I think it's a coincidence.
Hey, fellas, good to, good to be here.
Got a nice booth over here, tell the folks what they'll see if they come down, they still got a couple hours.
Oh, we've got a lot of fun stuff. We've just lined, uh, launched a new Glock line of Glock accessories and upgrades. So we've got triggers and.
I saw that, tell people, okay, so, uh, what was the catalyst? What, what, what made you think, uh, you know, hey, we need to jump into the Glock market? Because I think what you're doing is awesome.
Oh, man, well, the catalyst was I bought a P80 and I loved it. And the P80s use Glock parts and I already had a Glock, of course, who doesn't?
Yeah.
And if you don't, go get one. But I bought a P80, loved it and I thought, oh, man, well, let's do some stuff.
Wait a minute, where's, where's some accessories? I don't see any accessories, right?
Well, I've got all kinds of them now.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, because when you bought it, you know, you seen there was a need.
Exactly, exactly.
So the P80 is, for those that don't know, a P80 is kind of your, the do-it-yourself Glock.
Yes.
Like an 80%, you buy it, it looks like a Glock and then you complete it to turn it into a Glock.
Yes, and you can use Glock components as well as Glock compatible components. So we thought it'd be fun to make things specifically for P80. So we started out by doing that and so we actually have flared Magwells and parts specifically for the P80, which is, serves our California market, our people, because we're in a tough situation where we can't get many new guns, but we can.
Modify the ones you got.
Yeah, modify the ones you got, or you can build your own from scratch and use, you know, high-quality upgraded accessories, you know, extended controls.
Sure.
Things to make it easier.
So are you an engineer by trade?
Yes, I'm an engineer by trade, so, um, this is.
So you could have been building hot rods, but instead you went this direction.
I wa, I was building hot rods. I built the Batmobile.
Did you really? The original Batmobile?
The new Batmobile.
Oh, the new one?
What does that mean? I don't know this. What, what's going on?
No, I built the new Batmobile, the new car, so I was an engineer for that project.
Really?
Yeah, so we built that whole thing from scratch, we did two of them.
You, wait, wait, are you talking about the, um?
The movie car.
Yeah, 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 but the, um, uh, the one with Christian Bale?
No, the one with Ben Affleck, the new Batmobile. And the word on the street is Ben Affleck is out and somebody else is in.
Oh, really?
But it's carrying through all the movies, so this vehicle's going through all of them. I also did the Fast and Furious vehicles, five through nine.
I didn't know this.
Yeah, I'm a car guy, man.
Yeah, big time.
Before I got into guns, I, you know, they stuck me in a real engineering job and I got lucky in cars, so.
Saying those, every one of those cars you built were like your kids.
Oh, my, I love, I love them.
You burst it, you raised it and you cried when they went away.
Oh, my gosh, if I could have my own Batmobile.
I was gonna say, you didn't even get to keep any, I know we're not supposed to be talking cars, but.
Right.
I, I'm gonna get your card, we'll, I'll get you and we'll talk about some more cars.
Guns and cars go together well.
Yeah, I just.
Let's be honest, you know, we like to modify, upgrade and have, have cool stuff, so.
Who doesn't own a gun or a car that doesn't want to modify it?
Right, somebody who's not an enthusiast.
Here's one right here.
Well, Michael, Michael, you need to get yourself a Glock.
Do you leave any of your weapons alone?
Do I leave any of them alone?
Do you modify any of them?
I think I've modified every single, so my, my AR.
My point, there's my point.
My AR, the only, I bought my AR in 99, the only part left is most of the bolt carrier group.
And that's.
Everything, everything else, literally everything else has been replaced.
So, so where do you get your inspirations? Is it from what you would want as a, as an owner? Or do you talk to people or do you have a team? Because I kind of, you kind of remind me of the car industry and, okay, now we did this car, now next year we gotta do this car. And then you all gotta get together and work on it. How does that, how does that process go?
The process is very similar to cars, the, nice thing about guns is they don't change as frequently as cars do.